We have scheduled 10 minutes before our normal monthly meeting to have any public input on the budget process, and so I want to open up right now our public hearing to give anybody a chance to address the council. I'll be obligated to take the full 10 minutes of personal.
You just can't start the next one until.
No, you don't have to.
I don't know how it's supposed to be.
It's 10:00, and then our meeting starts at 10:10.
10:10, so you cannot transition.
Yeah, I just. 10:10 start time.
Okay.
Got any jokes?
I don't, but I suppose there's opportunity for people to run in here last minute, so.
We have that seat wide.
We worked it out. It was a long conversation. We worked it out to figure out the best way to handle it.
It's always been advertised at 10:00.
I guess I'll do this. Smile. Who's Jack? Thank you.
Month and a half. August 1st is diagnosed. I hope that you should talk about.
Did someone say, hey, Josh? I thought I heard, I couldn't see them.
That was Burns. I didn't know you were sick, so sorry to hear that. Hope you're getting better.
Mr. Burns.
How are you?
Good to see you, sir. Good to hear your voice.
There you go.
So this is an opportunity for any public to give any feedback to the council in response to the budget. I'm going to make a second call for anybody that would like to address the council.
That's what it is.
I got bored here today. I haven't done it for a long time.
Bored with you?
I like to eat today.
I find that hard to believe.
Got my own here because anyone who spends $50.
The other girl, Kelsey.
Yeah? Where's she at?
Never said that.
29 South of Burnham, another Matthew.
Yeah.
She's got a shop in their scale house.
Really?
Yeah. I didn't think I said that. I mean, I get the point.
Yeah. Yeah, she could've been in the shop quite a bit. They're always talking to her. Good to see her.
Yeah, she's by the house. And that process. He didn't want to spend. Point out on carpet and patch. I laminate it. I laminate it down.
He was driving.
In my son. She can go. We don't need her expertise on color.
Yeah.
We call on.
He needed a text message. Had a letter from each.
Because I'm never increasing life. I don't.
What'd you say? Oh, yeah. Everybody doing all right? Yeah. Yeah, my son looked at me, started crying, didn't recognize me at first, so. Man, that wasn't the best.
It's really.
Did he say anything?
Huh? Yeah, my son looked at me after I showed up, and he started crying. Was he doing right? Never knew that.
Just very hard.
Never knew that. Really? Really, that's all. Yeah.
They probably haven't heard the voice.
Yeah. He's coming today. He's coming up a new year's courthouse. Yeah, my mom's watching him right now. She's got alcohol meeting after this.
He's seated, sitting up a little bit. That's hard to do.
I know when I tried to get him set up, it was $400.
Yeah, I was going to say, when we tried to get him up to the like, he was that too. This is drumming last four steps. They're all.
Oh, yeah, he's really good. I mean, they called me an extra senior. It wasn't bad.
Yeah, something there.
It was crazy. But the car show was like half, like almost 180 miles.
They leave libraries across. It was real.
Once I was told that they had more people at car shows than they did at the party.
The church getting a metering.
No, it was open.
All right, so I would entertain the motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So then.
So.
And for the record, there was no comment from the public. All right, so we are 10:10.
Shouldn't we vote on it? We have a much.
Sure can.
Do we need to vote?
I can, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So all those in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Josh?
Kick the chair.
You have a vote?
Sorry, I don't know if I can vote for us.
Okay, you in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's have a. All right, I would like to call our regularly scheduled October meeting to order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge my head to the earth.
All right. First thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. Beth, did you have minutes to designate for the last one to you? Yep. All right, I assumed you had them, but I was saying.
I just normally discuss them. I don't give them to you.
Okay. And then we've got transfers listed under the consent agenda. Is there any transfer that we want to pull out and discuss or any concerns there?
I had a couple things, Tim. I got an email from the legislature requesting a change in line, so I don't know if we need to do that as a scripter's error or in there or if we need to change.
That's already been changed, and you should have gotten an updated agenda.
Oh, I don't think I did. I told them to work on the old one.
It's okay.
Mr. President, you want to vote on the minutes, sir? All right, was that the only concern you had, Josh?
So just a couple other little points that I dealt with and withdrawn, but if we can do that under discussion of the four factors going out, whatever your preference is.
Go ahead.
So the veteran's office has a question, $400 for software. I don't think we would be like, I don't think that that would be reflected in our budget, the total that we're spending this year, and I haven't seen anything that would indicate that that's a recurring charge. So just a question that I have for that department. And then, you know, we also discussed custodians owing $4,000 in his line, which presumably is overtime. And that again is discussed by the council policy. I don't think there's any reason the state wouldn't be approved just for this, but I think they'll look forward to talk about policy.
All right, so Tracy would like to pull those two items out of the consent agenda for further discussion. Could we approve that?
So motion, so the custodian before and veterans office both?
Yeah, that was your question.
And there are four items up there, custodian, three of them are $2,000. Which ones are your?
I think it would just be the last two, right?
You can just pull them all, and then we can pass them together. I guess that would be my request.
Are you talking all of the custodian requests or all the requests in general?
All the custodian requests.
Okay.
And veterans office. Is that right?
Right.
I have Josh down making that request.
Yeah, we don't have to. We're given the authority for any member to pull any line item from the consent agenda.
So we can do that just based on consent? We don't need a vote on that?
Yeah, I think it's consent unless somebody says, wait a minute, if it only takes one, say it's not full consent.
Okay, I agree.
So that's four custodians and one veterans office being pulled, is my understanding.
Okay, then I just have to know what you could add.
So those five items will pull. Any other concerns with the consent agenda?
I'm just pulling the corporate. I'll just do. When I read her transfer, if this is.
All right, so we've got the four custodian lines, veterans office request.
State clerk?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
All right, any others? Okay, so minus those that we're pulling out, I would entertain the motion to approve the rest of the transfers and the approval of the August meeting. So then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven oh, sure.
Seven oh, correct. Okay, so we've got these, let's just start from the top. The request to transfer $1,000 to the fixtures and furniture line for the custodian. Josh, what was your concern there, if any?
My primary concern is that this appears to be $4,000 in overtime. I don't think that there's anything that we can do about that for this year, but I'm not sure if this would be, it may be within our personnel policy, but I don't think it's in the essence of the policy to use comp time in lieu of overtime. So I don't know if we need to formally do anything different. I would entertain Beth's opinion on this. I mean, if we just say, if we do not fund transfers in the future, I don't think that gets around our obligation. And I would also ask Eric, what are, what are our tools to make sure that the policy's being followed and funded while simultaneously protecting our liability for opportunity to our employees for what's actually done?
Well, if it's actually done, you got to pay it. I mean, that's the bottom line, and that becomes a management issue. You know, you have the obligation under state and federal law to pay overtime if they're qualifying, if they're allowed to have it, and comp time is for whatever we do not use. And if you have the management decision that could come to bite you, you could be forced to pay for overtime that wasn't done correctly, so. I mean, that's your ultimate obligation is to pay it. Now, if you said no, well, you know, you can say no, not suggesting, you don't have that ultimate authority, but that would certainly put it in questionable territory with the wage and standing approach.
What's the mechanism in place to keep from being charged overtime in the future and mandated to pay it when we don't have?
Management of the supervisors and having a policy that says this is what it takes, and you got to have preapproval or whatever situation, and I don't know what your management policy says. I'm sure you've got one, right, about overtime use?
Well, he is on his end, so she is allowed to get overtime, but he doesn't have an overtime line. That's why I asked him to do for 2022. I think this started when COVID started, and the commissioners allowed him to have some overtime, and I don't think it's everything discontinued. I told him that he needs to do some flex time and not keep these overtimes, so.
Who's the supervisor?
The commissioners.
I mean, it's often like whatever their rules are, and they have to enforce the rules. You cannot, as you know, you don't have to direct supervisor, but then when a bill comes to you, it was not per policy, that's where the problem comes in. So my suggestion is to just have that conversation with commissioners, make sure that they got the rules in place, and I know that things have gotten a little out of sync with all the COVID. Everybody gets that, but, you know, a year and a half later, it probably was not as good as it was six months ago.
I also have explained, like during the winter, if he comes in at 5:30, clears sidewalks, and he used to go home early, but then if it's still snowing, then he needs to stay to clean the sidewalks for people to leave. And that's been okay by the commissioners also. It does say here that during the times he did, I'm not a part-time person, he liked to use additional work times, too, so.
So if I understand you correctly, I mean, these are hours that have already been worked. You need to pay for that work and then address policies and supervision oversight going forward.
That would be my recommendation, yes.
Via the commissioners?
Yeah, I think so, sure. You know, it sounds like you got lost in the shuffle. You have to go back in the shuffle.
Did he have a assistant? No.
Not right now. He's advertising for this. Well, he's the second in command, and he's part-time assistant, and he does have one that comes in and loads and works when needed.
Thank you.
He works for him.
Overtime is everything.
He works, and he works for him.
Okay, so Josh, that addresses, in my mind, that addresses those two, those two, the bottom two requests totaling the $4,000. We pulled out all four, so I want to go back up to the fixtures and furniture line and also the janitorial supply lines. Yes?
The reason that I kind of question the janitor supplies is where it came from in maintenance contracts. It was my thought that that line had been basically a calculated line, and it would appear to be that it is not. I just wanted to point that out in light of the current budget being still under review.
I would.
Keith has changed some of his maintenance contracts, for instance, with the red stains.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't. It does say here that he supplies another janitorial supplies, and that's been made up to kill COVID.
I mean, if you look at 2020, he spent within $1,500 of his allotted budget of $19,000. So this transfer of $2,000 is over and above the margin that he had left at the end of last year, so.
That doesn't really make sense to me. That's kind of what I'm.
That's, yeah, I agree. That's a concern.
Yeah, and this year, originally he had requested a large increase, and then during his budget here in reverse at the $19,000, so I don't know. It's kind of all over the place, but I would question the validity that it's a prescribed number.
Do you want me to come up?
I would. Yeah, that would be good.
So is Beth a volunteer on the fantasy?
Yes, she is.
Okay, I guess then to tell you, the question of a personnel policy meeting or a meeting regarding personnel policy, specifically, you know, the courthouse being shut down and how we have to pay employees in that event, is supposed to be in the works, I believe, but I don't know. I haven't heard of a scheduled time.
No, there is not a special time, and we've had a lot of things going on since we decided to do some of that. For instance, my office staff, I haven't had to be able to write out what we need. It will be addressed by the end of the year, but this would go, this would not go to the policy. It would go to the commissioners and ask them to talk to Keith. It would not really go to the personnel policy.
Did they amend the personnel policy when they authorized the answer of overtime for Keith?
It was in an executive order. No, they did not.
So would we still under that?
It was under the COVID. No, we're not. It was.
No.
I'm not going to sit here and answer for the commissioners. If they need to ask the commissioners some questions, then that should be done at a commissioners meeting. I don't want to.
I'm just, I'm not asking you to answer for the commissioners. I was just asking if we thought we were still under that executive order.
Can we table these things? Those to ask more?
I don't think he's got enough.
No.
He's not got enough lines.
The custodian has, per my August statement, has roughly $10,000 in his hairline. I don't, but this is August, not September, so the veteran would have one, but the data information in that.
Well, it has to be paid. There's no, there's no question about that. It has to be paid because he worked it.
Right.
So we just, we just need to.
Can I make the notion that we accept those four items?
Well, we're not going to play out with the other two. He's on his way.
All right, let's move down to the veterans office.
So on that, the veterans line was $600 last year, and he requested $600 this year, but he has requested a $400 additional, so I don't know, I don't understand if he's, if this is a one-time thing or what's going on there. I don't see it as, in his defining it as the transfer going to recurring or a one-time thing.
If we bust it for it next year, why is it one hit this year?
Well, totally. Totally. I mean, it was $600 last year.
It says this is a renewal license, which would, in my head, when I hear renewal license, that means every year, but.
Yeah, like a once a year.
Right, and just his whole, I think this is, he says it's for Adobe software, but like he's, I think he's saying that he pays for it out of the computer line, which would not be appropriate that I think of, but I don't know. I would convert Beth on that.
Did he transfer out of this last year? $150 transferred out.
Looks like it.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, and now that I look at his budget, his budget doesn't have a computer line. He has an office equipment line, which I assume that that's how he's paying for.
He has computer.
Yeah, the computer software line, unless I'm completely misunderstanding, would be an appropriate line for Adobe software licensing.
I agree. But what I don't understand is it says, the last sentence of his transfer request is the computer fund has been used previously to pay by transfer for other items. So I don't know what he's saying with that. Is that just in general, or is that specific to this thing? But my. And this is such a small amount. I mean, I'm not against it.
Can we just move on?
I'd like to. I'd like to approve.
I'd like to second.
I agree, it's a small amount and we encourage departments to transfer within their budget as much as possible. So like, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the process, but I want to know how it impacts what we're getting ready to adopt for 2022. Like, do we have the wrong number? Is there a new, you know, is there a new cost that he's incurring with this software? I'm not opposed to approving this transfer and then before we adopt the 2022 budget, getting some clarification from him.
I agree.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to.
I think you got one.
We have one?
You got one on veterans' line, yes.
I second.
I'm going to do a second.
Okay, cool. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, opposed?
Seven oh.
Seven oh. Alright, the next one is the clerk's office, imaging and mileage.
We have Keith here, can you?
Sure. Sure. We'll put that on hold. Keith, you have questions on your transfer request? Can someone articulate the questions we just had?
Well, let's just start with the first one. Furniture and fixtures, what is that?
Some of the fixtures inside the courthouse are old, including the drainage and stuff like that, the lighting, that has to be fixed. There's not enough funds currently to cover for what needs to be repaired and fixed on that, what's left for the year. Get some of the better damage, like some of the emergency fixtures and stuff like that. They need to be replaced if they're faulty.
So, so your maintenance contracts line, is that not a fixed amount? Or has there been changes to those contracts recently?
It depends on longevity of the contract. Basically, I use that just for contracts that are established within the county already for the courthouse. Being anywhere from like chem serps to routine maintenance contracts that we already have established and are blocked.
So, so last year that line was nineteen thousand. You spent seventeen five. So you were within fifteen hundred dollars of spending that line.
Correct.
You're asking to transfer out of there two thousand dollars, which would be more than the fifteen thousand dollar margin you had left last year.
Correct. And the reason for that is because with the approval of the boiler repairs from the council, that maintenance contract fund will be dormant because the funds repair the boilers, which had been an issue from previous year of why spend that much with their ACs and stuff like that. So that's just why the funds are being pulled from a different location.
So you're not going to have a boiler maintenance contract to pay out of the security system?
Correct, because the funds were paid from.
Exactly.
So then why the increase in request?
Because we still have other issues on, for next year's budget, we still have issues with other ACs, with the AC and stuff like that that have to be the next step of looking at. We've got a file that I've already started to address that stuff with too.
But maintenance contracts are only, of that line should only be the contracts that are already stated on what's going to cost you for the current year to fix.
Correct.
Repairs and.
Yes, absolutely. And my goal is, is to have, which we do not currently have in place, maintenance contract, preventative maintenance for the boiler system, preventative maintenance for the AC. So that way we have somebody that is certified, licensed, educated to look at the system and say that it's running properly and everything else, and we don't have contractors coming in and putting Band-Aids on immediate issues and stuff like that, someone that comes in here consistently. That's what I'm looking for, for the preventative maintenance side.
So you really didn't have a reason for the number you put down because you don't know what it's going to be?
Correct, correct.
You don't, question, you don't know what your contracts are going to be on a year-to-year basis?
Not for any new established contracts or what my game plan overall to have, you know, the operating systems of the AC and the boilers, I, no, I don't know what those costs would be. Of course, I'd have to do my due diligence, probably per request from you guys and for the commissioners to get estimates for preventative maintenance and routine maintenance for these, the equipment. That's beyond my expertise to be able to maintain and give a good diagnosis.
I understand that. I guess it's been the expectation of the council for a very long time that anything that's like contracts, if it's in the budget as a, as a maintenance contract, that it should be a prescribed number. Like, that number should be established before we get into the budget season. I mean, you should know what it is going to be for next year pretty close with your contract when we go through a budget.
But the only one that you don't, the only one you don't know right now is the boiler and the new, the one that's getting fixed. The rest of it, you know.
Yes, yeah, because it's a second, like, cost month to month on.
So Josh, he has the other numbers. He just is waiting for the boiler to get fixed or repaired and to find someone to work on the new, whatever, putting on that new.
Everything currently established as a contract and filed with the county and the courthouse, I know that that number what's going to be month to month, but anything that I'm adding additional, that's just why that number is for my new budget for 22 was so much higher is because I don't know what those numbers are going to be until I do my due diligence and reach out.
Okay, so there, you don't know a number of it, is what you're saying, if it's not?
Correct, for anything new.
Um, could you, I mean, how, could you get that?
I, I could get that. I don't know, it depends on how soon I can get different contractors to come in. I mean, it's been very difficult to get contractors to come in, just even give estimates, but I can do that, yes.
Because it's really, I don't want to just budget a number.
I understand.
Yeah, I appreciate all the work. I really do, and I know you're doing a good job. So this is, I think, just more of a, like, what our expectations are in terms of what these different lines mean to communicate to you. I mean, if it says contract, we're expecting, or I mean, I personally am expecting that number to be reflective of, I have ten contracts that cumulatively are fifteen thousand dollars, therefore a budget of fifteen thousand dollars.
And I understand that, and I see that in the, just, you know, as maintenance contracts being the same way, in my point of view as well.
Yeah, yeah. And then if you have canceler costs that are going to come up that you anticipate or we see year after year after year, we would budget those differently than in a maintenance contract line.
So as for this line that we're talking about now, since he's not going to have the boiler maintenance, I think the motion could, would you organize anyone?
I don't care. Whatever the pleasure of the council is.
We did all the lines.
I mean, we've discussed them, correct, at this point.
We have not discussed payroll.
Yeah. So the maintenance contract to the janitorial supplies, if he's not going to have any, then he's going to have that extra from not having to maintain that boiler contract?
I'm all amounts, but put more money in the courthouse to fix things if he's got money to just have to use that other one.
I'll make a motion to approve all of them. Well, didn't we just talk about that with you?
I thought we just did.
Yeah, the commissioners told us to do it.
About.
He said to pay it.
Yeah.
So we have to.
What? I don't think that we asked Keith any questions about payroll.
We just talked to Eric.
No, we didn't talk to Eric.
We talked to Eric, but we brought him up. Payroll, also, or I asked.
I make a motion to approve the first.
First two?
Yes, right here, related to trucks, fixtures and furnitures, and the second one, maintenance contracts, again, bill supplies and payroll.
And all stuff like that.
Alright, we've got a motion in a second. All those in favor of approving the transfers to fixtures and furniture and janitorial supplies?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, that's approved seven nine.
You in on that one?
Doc?
Yep.
Yeah, I thought so.
Okay, approved seven nine. Alright, so we still have the transferring to your payroll line, the amount of four thousand dollars to cover overtime?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions for Keith on this?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, go ahead, Josh.
The, I know the commissioner, I don't even know when, but way back when, had authorized my executive order. And we're still collecting information on this, so I'm just really genuinely trying to understand this issue. They had made an executive order allowing me to use overtime, which is contrary to our personal payroll policy. And I know that your, since your position will indicate that you have obligations in terms of how long you might have to work on any given day. But in general, what is driving, I mean, this is a request for four thousand dollars, which would be basically ten percent of your salary, or ten percent of your annual compensation, so it's a pretty significant number. What has changed driving that much overtime in here?
Honestly, it has to do a lot with even having an assistant hired in, their abilities when it comes to inclement weather and stuff like that. We've had issues like with the boiler, which led up to boiler where we had major water leaks and stuff like that, where I was here handling that, cleaning that stuff up. I tried to do as much as I possibly can and put it as comp time. But sometimes it, you know, it hits at the end of the payroll, two weeks, and I just throw it down as the overtime line. Tried to, Beth and I have had many conversations about overtime and comp time and stuff like that. So I try to do my due diligence and keep my eye on my budget line to make sure I, you know, I don't oversee that salary ordinance on what's given to me. But in the long run, with my responsibilities with inclement weather and you have water damage, if I wish I had all those photos, you guys can see the reasons why, you know, prompts my overtime sometimes. But that's the one reason why I put it down, because even if, in my point of perspective, if I put it down as comp time, I have no assistant, like, currently. If I put it down for comp time, when am I going to plan on taking, and then that's another discussion at the end of the year, having to pay out comp time? And I just, I, I don't know how to put this, and I don't want to sound cheesy or whatever else. I care about my job and, you know, the building, so I'm going to do what I have to do, you know, with being in comp or overtime, but I try to do it as comp, so that way it doesn't raise awareness to Beth and cause her a headache to have to talk to me again. But at the end of the day, and at the end of the year, it still had, like, it happened last year with COVID and those issues and stuff like that. Like, it had to pay out, so then that's just, that number looks worse than what this number does at four thousand dollars. And I'm, like I said, I just try to do my due diligence. A lot of things happen to do with systems failing, causing water leaks, inclement weather, having assistant staff members that have the ability to assist me in inclement weather and stuff like that. And that, sorry to bring that up, but eleven dollars an hour, that kind of limits.
So is this four thousand dollars for the entire year to date?
Correct. So what I did was I took my current, current budget to date for what I've used, calculated at eighty hours for the two weeks, and figured out what I would happen, what I would need by the end of the year. So the four thousand dollars should cover at my set, given hourly rate and hours per two weeks, that four thousand should cover me for my overtime for anything else.
So this is a previous work performed, this is future work that you assume will be performed now?
No, 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 no. I took, no, no. This is taking, this is taking where I'm at right now on my budget line for my salary and taking it to see where I'm at, where I should have been, and then seeing what I need to cover that by the end of the year. So four thousand dollars will cover to make sure that at the end of the year, when I send my last payroll stuff in, it will cover and not put me in the negative on my account.
I guess I'm not understanding how you know how much overtime you're going to work from.
That's the only thing.
I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not including any overtime in the four thousand dollars. I'm just, I've just.